Keep it down.
And do the pledge of allegiance or can you just get the?
Got a flag?
It's down there on the bottom.
Okay, I'll put on the crossfire holder.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, thank you everybody for coming.
Merry Christmas.
There's one item there.
I'm not sure we can, have I read the code?
Uh huh.
Yeah, we don't believe we're qualified because it didn't come subsequent to the release. It's just because I forgot. So we have a, we have, the Abby called and asked me if we would do the thing and he sent me this stuff in Riviera Parking because it's December, it's time for meeting our thing. And I had sent it and then emailed Ron, add this to the agenda, and he forgot to add it to the agenda. So, do we want to add anything that you see we need it or we have to have a meeting right away?
They can't wait until the next meeting.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Yeah, I think it should wait till the special meeting. You're talking about having.
Well, that's right because there's going to be another meeting. It's going to be in like, what, two weeks?
Schedule it as soon as you can. Okay, we won't worry about that. The last one, and I say is there anything else? We'll get it.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, it terminates every year and needs to be redone. So I'll make sure that we send him the insurance part and so that we're, at least we've kept him up on that. Okay. Any public input on anything that's not on the agenda? Cool. We're going to try to have a quick meeting and go away so we can finish that meeting. On the consent calendar, we've got three items and the minutes got left off, but we want to approve the minutes from last month also.
Did we ever make the correction? Have we requested by yet?
I left the minutes off. I'm sorry, I didn't see that bit. So maybe we'll postpone them until we can get the audio and listen to it.
Okay, because I looked at my notes, I couldn't understand what in the world I wrote.
Okay.
It was, it was, it was. Can you see it? Can you hear minutes? Because it's on YouTube. The last meeting is up, was up a couple days after the meeting. So anybody can, and it's the whole thing, there's no, there's no cut pieces from switching tapes. It was a very short meeting too. Okay, you guys know.
I made up a copy.
Okay, it's.
Yeah, it's the bottom of the first page.
Yeah, it was the second motion, the second action, okay. And I put Director Shepson made a motion to waive by reading the title only SMRPD directors ordains as follows, and I put the ordinance number 11131.
Oh, the ordinance.
For the scale parts.
Yeah, it was your ordinance. Yeah.
The option was to do the title and read the whole thing.
Okay, okay.
Well, we did what it took, so we just need to correct the minutes to reflect the actual title.
Yeah.
So we can postpone this till next.
Especially if the minutes aren't on the consent calendar.
Since they're not on the consent calendar.
I copied it. This is a template from the special meeting and a slide.
Oh, and it has to be on? Oh, okay.
Well, that being the case, then I can motionally accept the consent calendar presented on the agenda.
Is there a second?
What's the second?
Oh, in favor? Okay, now, there's a new thing.
The recording votes, yeah.
There's a new thing coming up in January, so we're going to start today. All group votes have to be recorded by person.
You have to, you have to poll?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is unanimous, so I'm going to just put it down as Tom, Linda, Shay, Ron, and Greg were.
Is this a law that we've been neglecting to follow? Is this a new law?
It takes effect January 1st.
Okay.
Because a copy of it is.
Okay, we're going to be good and start early.
Is it for special districts or?
It applies to a lot of districts, yeah. Treasury's report.
There's not much, there's a couple copies going around. I, I have been going back and forth front to figure out the best way to do this. And, you know, the summary looks really good, and then I had somebody call it garbage. So I started to put everything in there, which is actually, these two here are actually in the Treasury's report also. But I do a little parsing because this is everything and I do income and revenue in the, in the full report. The trouble is, is when you try to print it out, it comes out to 77 pages.
Yeah, I know it's less. Can you save, can you save it to like, do a PDF?
That's what it is, and that's what I want.
Landscape instead of portrait?
I can try that.
Yeah, landscape.
As it is, this takes me like 10, 15 hours of reading to get all this stuff ready. But that's okay, I can, now I've got it down better, I just, it took me a while to figure out what was what. I'll try that next. The other thing I can do is just break out the details into a separate file and put them online that way.
Where do you get a couple people? Because there's no way, we don't do enough transactions to make 77 pages, so let's.
Especially the children's center.
Here it is, children's center, yeah.
Well, on what program do you use in doing that?
Excel.
You use Excel?
Because that's how I get the files.
You could fit it to a page then.
He set it to eight and a half by 11.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just fit it to one.
And there seems to be a lot of spaces between the different entries, so that's why I asked. I don't see the, you know, it looks like a double or triple space between each entry on some of the pages.
Because it should look just like, it should look just like this.
Yeah, this is it.
Oh, that's P and L. That comes from QuickBooks.
Yes, but she exports it to an Excel file, well, maybe not here. Because that's what she does, she exports it to an Excel file, Excel file, and then I just take that. I'm sure it's not your version of it.
Well, why don't you just ask her for a detailed, like, rather than lost than instead of.
Well, that's only because of 77 pages, because there were some pages that was spaced out. And what I, what I'm experiencing on Excel, you can condense that, you can even reduce the printout. So you could, 75% or something, and you could get it down.
Put more effort in the output, because I was just worried about the numbers and so I'll put more effort in the output.
Just a suggestion.
Well, we appreciate, appreciate that you're doing it, because nobody's ever done that for all the time I've been on the board, so thank you. Wendy?
And can we get it online somewhere?
It is online.
It is, it's. Where is it? It was on the minutes today. No, on, on our webpage.
It's on the webpage where under agendas, it's in the agenda pack.
It's under the agenda.
The details are all there. Under about SMRPD.
Okay, I'm just not finding it, okay.
Under about, I'll send you, well, the link is in the notice also that I sent out.
I just copied and placed it right into, onto the site.
Well, I mean, I saw it through the email, but I don't, when I went to the website.
We know it's there.
It's there.
It's part of the whole agenda packet. It says though, it's not separate, it's part of the agenda packet.
And this is for the budget that you're working on?
Sorry?
Are you, is this for working on the budget, coming up with the budgets?
Yeah, this is, you have to understand our finances, then we'll be able to do a budget.
Oh, I see.
Instead of just saying, this is what we spent last year, and this is what we're going to do this year.
Right.
I thought we'd just keep track of it.
Hey. Lindy?
Hi, good evening. Well, since last time, last meeting, I've been out of town a lot, which I had told you, so again, Jenny's been keeping the place going smoothly, so thank you Jenny, for sure, definitely. So, which has been, you know, because you could save money not paying me, so that's a good thing. And it's still running, but let's see, we're, we're working really hard on our billing to try to get it the way it's supposed to be. We've actually billed just under $500 in November for additional charges of kids coming, extra days of staying, extra hours, so that's good. So we're trying to make sure that we're keeping track of all of that. Having a little bit of trouble collecting some of our tuition, but working on that as well. In January, we're going to start mailing the bills to everybody, their invoices, rather than stick them in cubbies, because we want to get it so that billing will go out on the 25th, it's due on the 1st, it's late on, it's late after the 5th. And because kids come, you know, we're out of schedules this way, there's no excuse, and it's not that many stamps, so Megan's going to start just mailing those out. We're still working on enhancing the center, it's looking really good. Hopefully you guys will come in January and have your meeting at the center so that you can, so that you can see it, so.
So you'll be ready in January?
Yes, we'd love to have you. I'm going to be putting together a subcommittee of the advisory committees to look at the finances with a fine tooth comb, you know, now that I think I've got it pretty straight and, and it's a little more straightforward to understand, so we'll be taking a look at that. Let's see, what else? And that's, that's the plan. My, my plan also is in January, before you start advertising for, you know, a, a director and phase my way, my way back into retirement. Although it's, you know, I, I love the center and the children and the staff, so it's, it's a great experience, so thank you.
Do you have any questions, Wendy, for you? I, I got your plan last time, and I read it over, it seemed really thorough, so thank you for that. But I was wondering if we could get a copy of the actual report from the county?
Oh, sure, Greg has it.
And the plan of correction? Can we see a copy of that? With timelines on it? And I was wondering, where are you on, on some of those timelines? Because it says current steps and future steps. So I know with, with plan correction, you have certain period of time to fix things with Title 22, where are you with that?
Well, all the, the cleaning has been, has been, well, with Title 22, we're fine. We've got a week or a week. We're, we're, that's, that part's done. Are you referring to the one with the insurance, the county person?
This is the one that says adherence to community care licensing Title 22 requirements? And then you have a bunch of standards?
Yeah, and we're, that's finished.
So the whole thing is done?
That, that part is.
In a week, I think it was.
Yeah. Yeah, that's done.
So do they not require any ongoing? Because usually they require ongoing.
We, we faxed them all the information that they wanted, and I haven't heard from her back, I haven't heard back from her, so.
So as far as you're following up on an ongoing that is happening, you have some kind of system in place for that?
Well, I mean, they were specific documents that they wanted, which were faxed, so it's, it's a, that part.
This is making something different then.
Are you, are you looking at the, the county report?
I'm looking at, it says outside aesthetics, children's center, bathrooms. I'm looking at everything.
Oh, you're looking at my report?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood, I thought you were talking about the Title 22 licensing report.
It has two pages of that.
Right, that part, that part's done. And I don't have it in front of me to address, you know, each, each item. Greg and I are talking about, well, actually, we talked this last week about, hopefully over the break, there'll be some time when the center, you know, when there aren't children there to address some of, like, the sidewalk issue. So we're moving that way. Does that answer the question? Or I don't have it in front of me.
I just like to see the report, maybe we could put some timelines on it so we could look at it. The other question I had was really for the board, I know that there was some talk in the past about doing an analysis, a feasibility analysis for the children's center.
Well, that's kind of like getting that subcommittee of the advisory committee to take a look at the finances.
And what's the timeline for that? Because if we were looking and making decisions in June, I was looking at timeline, and it sounds like January 2014, we have to put out an RFP, March of 2014, or February, we have to vote to hire, to get somebody to do the feasibility analysis. April, we have to conduct it, May, we have to present it, and June, we have to make decisions. So is that like the timeline that you have?
Well, no, I'm not familiar with what you just, what you just spoke about. I think to my, to my mind, you know, we needed to, you know, work at the center, get, get things going before you can even look at feasibility, because on that sort of agenda, that, that outline that I put together, do you notice the last thing on there was marketing? So, you know, January's going to be the time when we can look at it, so it's a little, you know, it's, for me, it's premature to, to do a feasibility, because we haven't had an opportunity to market, to see what, what we can bring in and, you know, and what kids, what kids we can recruit. So I think, you know, having those couple of months to, to, to do a really strong, you know, recruitment, and I'm not exactly, you know, Jenny and I actually, we were just going over, you know, some, some thoughts about that, and I spoke with Greg about it too, so, you know, it's, it's, you know, to me, like I said, the marketing is the last thing, and if you don't market, then you don't know, you can't do a feasibility, because you don't know, you know, what, what the target is, where, where are the kids coming from? Can we get, can we get more kids?
I have, I have, I'm very aware of that. Yeah, on marketing, and that's, that's my business, I'm aware of marketing, and it does take, once you determine what your marketing goals and objectives are, and then develop a plan, and then implement the plan, and then wait for the response to that plan. I'm just looking at some timeline here, and so in other words, we don't want to say, starting June to market, so that we will find out by October if we can, if we can survive.
No, as I said, I mean, I think January is, you know, I think, you know, we're all feeling pretty good about the center, I think when you come and see it, with, you know, yes, there's some cosmetic, you know, the outside, you know, those kinds of things that need to be addressed. But, you know, the places, you know, the, the school looks like a place that you could invite parents, feel really good about it, you know, there's good things happening, and that's where we want to be. So I, I, to me, it's, we're just getting there, and the next, the next step is now to do your timeline, and I'm certainly not thinking, you know, you market in June, you know, to me, you market right in January.
Yeah, I think there has to be what I would call the test marketing, where you would actually put out a fear or have an objective to see if you can meet that goal, and then if that looks like it's doable, then you can go from there. There has to be certain, like, checkpoints, if you will, the milestones. Otherwise, you know, it's all, it's, everything's up in the air and something's going to happen somewhere.
Right, which is why, you know, I, I put down some specific just thoughts in terms of where do we get these kids and what can we do to do it? As I said, Jenny and I were, you know, I kind of went over that with Jenny this afternoon. So, you know, we do have some ideas, and of course are open to other ideas, for sure. You know, to me, like I said, we're just now getting to that point to look at it and, and take those steps, but.
Okay, well, I'd be interested when you get to that point, and I'd be happy to look at what your marketing plan is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not a, you know, this is not, advertising and marketing, you know, is not my background, however, you know, and, and also, you know, I need, this community, this community is unique, so, you know, I need, I need input from you all on where to get, where to get those kids. But, you know, I do know about marketing a, a children's center, and to me, you know, it begins with word of mouth, and then, you know, seeing where, where else are those kids drawing from, take our existing population, then bring, you know, but totally.
So what is the date for the advisory committee meeting? Because I know we've.
There isn't one that I'm, that I'm aware of. Yeah, I just got back in town and I just met with Greg, we talked about doing this subcommittee, so, you know, after the first of the year, then we'll, we'll put it together.
So the big.
So I guess my question is, I'm kind of talking and listening to the board, we're going to make some decisions in June, is that correct? So I guess we need to get some kind of, like, like Tom said, milestones or timelines, because there've been some questions about the burn rate of the children's center, the financial burn rate. So we really, again, we need to have monthly milestones.
Okay.
So that we can address the issues. And if we don't have an advisory meeting in January, we will be behind the timeline.
Okay.
Actually, when I talked to Lindy, and we were talking about the advisory, the financial advisory subcommittee could maybe be done by the end of January. Going over expenses, income, where do we need to get income, how much do we have to have? Are these expenses real? Do we need to, you know, do we need to plan the teachers having holidays? Do we need to plan that? What are the expenses that, so? And Deborah Johnson's worked a lot with Megan on that already, so she has most of those numbers down. We just need to make it like a real number, like, we realize we can't do without cleaning, so we have to have cleaning. Maybe we weren't paying, we weren't paying the director enough, so we have to realize this, what we were paying Amy probably isn't realistic. Maybe if we get somebody who's not as experienced as Lindy, we won't have to pay as much, but we don't want to get somebody that's not qualified either, so we're not done what we need them to do. So we're going to try to put together a real, real expense number, look at our income, how many more kids is it going to take to make that, and where do we go? And for everybody needs to know, word of mouth is, is really what's going to drive kids there, so everybody should go visit and see how cool it looks, because it's amazing. And so we need, we need everybody to tell their friends who's got kids, did you take your kid to the place? And they go, oh, well, it wasn't, you know, and go, go see it now, because it looks way different. And the bad.
Okay. I don't have kids, I really don't care if it's open or closed. But as opposed to just looking at what your expenses are, trying to fill more soup with kids, you could expand its purpose. Go into tutoring kids, all ages. Kids who are having trouble in high school, kids who are having trouble in junior high, and get subject specific, and you could generate some good capital that way.
That's really good. Jenny and I were talking today about, you know, the viability of offering other classes in the afternoon, get kids on, on campus. So that's a, that's a, that's a great venue for us to.
And it's going to promote the school promoting the tutoring, tutoring promoting the school.
Right.
That's, I think that's part of the feasibility study. That's a component of feasibility.
As I see it, the first thing is give them the numbers, find out what, what the costs are. The second thing is looking at the potential and what the options and possibilities are. This is something I've been, you know, I've been a proponent of from the beginning, I said, there's a lot of, that's a diamond in the rough, there's a lot of potential there if we can channel it and figure out, you know, the best use of that facility, maybe multiple uses, but, you know, I'm just saying that that's what comes later. But we have to, there has to be a systematic way to do that, we can't just say, well, just keep going, oh, we got one more kid this month, it's five for next, it's got to have a, we got to have a program.
Yeah, I mean, you, the way we used to, the way I used to do it was, you know, I had to turn in a budget like February, March for the following year, the fiscal year July 1. So, you know, you're looking at who are your, who's your existing, who's staying, you know, and who do you anticipate coming, and balancing that with how many staff. It's taken a little, a lot of time actually to figure out, you know, kids were coming, as I mentioned last time, just these random times that were not concrete, very difficult to, to analyze it on that when it's like that. And also, it's very difficult to stack, you know, according to the needs. So I think parents are now getting the idea that it's not a free for all, you know, that, that they're making a commitment, we're making a commitment to a staff member to be there for their child. So that's been sort of, you know, that takes a little bit of while to change that culture, you know, and that, that process. So just in figuring all that out, at least we know, you know, what we're dealing with today. We know, you know, who's there, when they're supposed to be there, what their tuition is supposed to be, when they're not there, we're calculating those hours and charging them for it. So that's been, you know, at least the initial, you know, process of just getting a big, bigger picture. So now, you know, we're, we're there, which is, which is great. Even better when we collect the tuition, that we're actually, you know, charging people, which, you know, has been a little bit difficult in some, in some circumstances. But, yeah, I appreciate that, and I understand, you know, the milestones, and, and I'll put something together for you in January, and then we'll put this advisory committee, or the subcommittee together.
Maybe go back to this report and start what's completed and what are you working on, and when do you think the next thing will be done, so that you can work off of what you've already done.
I'd be happy to do that, yeah.
I do want to compliment you and the staff, and I know you guys are doing a great job there. I mean, you've taken it from, from stage here to, and improved it, and, yeah, so I'm, you know, I have no problem with, with the work you've been putting into it, I think that's great. I'm just looking at the potential for the future.
Absolutely. That's what, you know, I mean, when I first spoke with Greg, I mean, that was, that was, that's the directive, is to figure this out, you know? Let's, let's get it looking the best we can, let's get it functioning the best way that it can. And, you know, it, it is a diamond in the rough. It's, it's a unique, it's a unique place, and to me, it would be very sad for it not to, you know, move forward. So that certainly is, is the direction. And, you know, again, Jenny and the staff really have been the consistent, you know, people, because when I, you know, I'm done traveling, but, but, you know, just for whatever reason, that, that period of time, I've really been in and out, and, and Jenny has really been the driving, you know, the consistent person there. So it's definitely been a team effort. Who pays for the advertising? We figure out just what type of advertising that we're doing. Does that come out of the children's center budget?
I don't think we're going to be doing like four-page ads on the register.
No, no.
Be like flyers.
We need some brochures.
Send them down, yeah, plaster in Portova Hills with it, or wherever we figure out.
Yeah, I'm not thinking, in terms of marketing, I'm definitely not what we're thinking.
Again, that's part of the feasibility study and the strategic operating plan, which is part of the feasibility study. So I think it gets back to a system, and we've got to start that and implement that now, if we're going to make some decisions in June.
Okay.
Okay. Christmas in the Canyon report.
For those that went, it was great. For those that didn't, it was great. I've had nothing but compliments from all, people from all walks, and people in the canyon, people outside the canyon. They said it was the best one we had, it was our third annual. There's a poster on the wall which commemorates our third annual. It was, although I was kind of the coordinator on it, it was not me that did it all. It was, we had a great team, we had some super people that put a lot of time and a lot of effort decorating the community center, organizing, getting the ads. We don't have the final numbers, but we, in fact, our president Greg Bates is our banker, and what numbers we came in with as far as gross income was about over $4,000.
Yeah, I made a deposit of $4,082.
That's great.
And that was a result of ads that ran in the newspaper, booth, costs of the vendor booths, and we're very reasonable on that, and raffle and donations. So the combination of those four income sources.
Santa pictures, sleigh pictures.
Oh, yes, Santa Claus pictures. And this year, if you were there, you would have experienced Santa came in on a sleigh. We had him on a, on a little, there's a little cart, little trailer, was pulled by Greg Bates' truck, and we had a professional Santa who volunteered, and Mrs. Claus, and we had elves, and it was absolutely wonderful. So we've not only brought in some good income, we've increased our assets for future events. So thank you all for working on it and participating, and I'm very happy that we were able to do it, and it's a, it's a real accomplishment, accomplishment for this district.
Tell them about Bob Click and Eric Gunther made the sleigh, and tell them how you met Eric.
Well, this is, this is part of what I do as a community organizer. I, I solicit of people.
You actually pointed out the fact that he's like our president.
I might run for president. You know, I, I went out and I got people, I was at the cafe having breakfast about four weeks ago, and a gentleman sitting next to me, we stuck up a conversation, he said he had lived here in the canyon, and he moved him back in, and I said, have you heard about Christmas in the canyons? And he said, no, and I says, well, how would you like to be a greeter on the, on the wagon? And we have a free wagon ride, hayride wagon. He said, well, I'd be happy to do that. I says, give me your phone number and email. Not only was he the greeter, he came to the meetings, he teamed up with Bob Click, who designed and built this sleigh. He brought in the hay, he did a whole bunch of things, and he was just one. If, if you were at the decorating session on Saturday before, we had people, we had the postmaster of Santa out there helping us decorate. We had, remember, it was pouring rain, we were out there doing it, we had the Mormons helping us. It was a great event, and like I say, so many people, everyone seemed to be so up and enthusiastic, and just, it was just a warm thing. Zach provided the, uh, the entertainment, we had some great music throughout the whole thing, a lot of volunteers, a lot of help, a lot of people. She even had a booth that was sewn something.
Candle.
We got something.
So what was the fellow's name?
Oh, Eric Gunther. Eric is, uh, he's lived in the canyon before.
Yeah, he used to live on Hazelville.
Yeah.
Isn't that close?
No, he's never lived on Hazelville.
Where did he live?
He lived in the, in the, in the, in the, where did he live?
Anyhow, we had a lot of good people, and it was great. And, and we're gonna have a final report on the finances after we get, we still got a few little bills to pay, but we're, we're on our way. So thank you all for.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Tom, because Tom really, it took a lot of effort to pull that together, and send out all those agendas, and coordinate all those people. So congratulations for that.
Cool, next item, Silverado Children's Center Plan. Um, the, I mean, you, you guys gotta go see it, it just looks remarkable compared to how it looked. And so the, one of the families is donating the new siding to the outside. So I've been out there a couple times with a couple different contractors to make sure they all say, yeah, this is a good idea, what we're gonna do. And so we're gonna, right after, for sure after Christmas, and probably after the first of the year, we'll be calm for a few strong backs and weak minds, and a few people who know how to hammer to come in. We're gonna re-side both long sides of the after-school building.
Oh, cool.
The M's, the M's are good.
The M's are good.
The M's are good, they just need to be.
Cocked and.
Cocked and painted. And the guy goes, paint it with your roller, get a lot of paint on it, but caulk it first. So that's how your sides died, is the caulk left and the paint got, the water got in behind the paint. So we think that'll work, and we're gonna see if we can do rain gutters, but that's not sufficient because of the kind of roof that's on it. So, um, I'm very excited about it, and, um, it looks green inside.
It would be great if we could do something, Brett had an idea for overhang with the extended roof, because the water just dripped right down the building. And during rainy days, you open the door, and it's coming in the classroom, and it's coming down the door. And they've never had like any kind of shelter over the doorway. It would be great to do that during this process. That would be wonderful, but if not anything else, but at least open the doorway.
They do the flashing over the door.
Yeah, when the siding gets put on, it just needs to be flashed correctly, right now it's not flashed correctly.
Yeah.
So when the new siding is put on, that'll all be addressed.
Yeah.
We, we probably aren't gonna afford the, the whole thing right now, but we can do those drip ends.
Are we gonna do that with volunteers?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll run the crew, so I mean, I know how to do all that stuff.
Just your hand lift.
But if we do, if we do.
You can do the left.
Not right now.
Is there going to, is there going to be a, is that gonna be a children's center advisory group, or that's, it's a reconstruction?
Whoever, it's everybody that wants to volunteer, we need everybody.
Have a meeting for that?
Yeah, what organizations, she's asking. I, I, I thought it would be a subcommittee of the board to do that.
Volunteer study.
It would be a subcommittee to do a, bring their little plan, including building and all that.
Hey, it'll be like the painting, just like the painting, we'll get a few people and do it.
Yeah, I've, well, the one lady, her, the Rixes, her father-in-law is gonna help. And I've told my candidate he had to help, and it's all volunteer, he's like, what? I said, yeah, I'm volunteering. So, and I'm gonna get Ted the roof wraps, so he'll see what we can do with the edge to make sure it's all integrated.
Yeah, get Ted over there, and I'll be helping, and.
Yeah, so we're gonna do a destruction and a repair instantly, all at the same time, is our plan.
Give us some scheduled days?
Not yet.
Yeah, give us some scheduled days, then we can put them out to the community.
We'll tell you all about it as soon as we come up with our plan, yeah.
I, we've been needing a new flyer for the children's center, and kinda waiting on all of these other things to happen, and then getting a flyer. So when we do like a grand reopening, we can fly her, we can get it out, maybe put an ad in a parent magazine or whatever. We don't know what month that project's gonna be in.
Well, we hope it's gonna be in January.
We hope January, okay.
Theoretically, it can all be done in one day.
Yeah, one, two days.
Well, you know, the problem is.
Not the painting, but the destruction.
The deck's gonna have to be removed for the first X number of boards, because the deck's above the bottom. So it's, it's all doable, we might, you know, just gotta have a plan. So that's kinda it, and actually, when we finish the siding and figure out what paint color we're gonna do, it's gonna be majority done. Shay and I are working on, we're working on the floor, but just, the floor in there kinda looks about as bad as this floor, kinda a little more grubby. So we're gonna come up with a way to scrub it down to the tile and then seal it really good.
It's already, it's already mostly down to the tile because of the cleaning, and because of the lack of floor shine on it over the years. There's just a couple spots, I think, I think I could do it by hand.
Well, good stripping and just run another wax on it.
Yeah. We're getting some more bids in for cleaning, so we should have some new bids in for cleaning, and, you know, I should've told Jenny, we're trying to figure out how to, you know, it didn't work with the teachers' cleaning, it just didn't. So, so if they wanna take over some of the jobs, we have to have a way to decide, is it keeping up or not? Or if we can get a inexpensive enough bid, then maybe we don't have to worry about it. But, so our current lady we've got, who we need to vote on someday, I made a mistake, I hired someone without voting on it, Sarah. But we had to clean it up. Um, she said, tell us your budget, and then she'll say, okay, we can give these jobs to a teacher, and we'll do this part, so we know it's kept up. So when we get different bids, we can look them all over and then go from there.
What's the schedule for the children's center during the holidays?
Close between Christmas, Christmas Eve.
They're closed already.
Yeah. Christmas Eve to, uh, New Year's, day after New Year's, usually, hopefully.
So the school's scheduled?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, because the school's schedule now is two weeks, we're only going for one.
So, so organizationally, I mean, I think we need a little bit more detail, cuz if we're gonna call for a children's center plan committee, then it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is a children's center plan revitalization report, not committee.
Not the finance.
Right, she's doing that under advisory committee.
Okay, so there's no new committee under the board, it's all just the advisory committee?
Yeah. We're kinda, we're, all of us are running with the what needs to be done next. So Shay volunteered her husband to do the painting, I'm rounding up the people to do the outside. But, um, anybody that's got, if, everybody should go and look and say, hey, you're forgetting about fixing this, so. Cuz everybody looks at it with different eyes, so everybody should go and see what they're seeing, what should we do.
So who's got the overall plan, I guess is the question.
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah.
It seems a bit murky to me.
Shay asked it, no, you asked it.
It just seems real murky to me.
And, uh, so I'll ask you.
It's like, it's like, you go to Ryan, now we have an engineering, a couple guys sitting around, yada, 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 there's a box that says a new miracle happens, and then I put them, so. But who's gonna actually do something, who's gonna do what?
So we needed an advisory committee.
Her, yeah, her subcommittee is gonna come back and tell us where to go, then we're gonna have to talk about, as a whole.
So the subcommittee is out off the children's center?
Yeah, she's doing that under her advisory committee.
Now, it's instigated by the director.
Yeah.
Remember Amy was apologizing for not having that advisory meeting.
Deborah Johnson already volunteered to Lindy to help coordinate that, she's actually done most of the work already, so. Lindy's gonna ask a few people to put, so that'll be a part, but that's coming back to us. We're the, we're actually the committee, I think.
That original advisory committee now is gonna be split into two, because some of the people were there for the financial stuff, like, like Debbie Johnson. And some of us are there for the physical stuff, you know, like Peterson's and whatever.
I think it makes, sorry, I think it makes more sense to do it off of, of our board, cuz then we can have it reported here, rather than reported to the, the Silverado Children's Center Board. Because when she comes in here, now she's gonna report two things, one is their normal stuff, and the other is this committee. So I, see, I would think that'd make more sense to do it off of our board, a subcommittee off of our board, an ad hoc committee off of our board, cuz then it can report to here.
It's way, it's way uneasier to do it that way.
Amy always gave an advisory committee report whenever she had one with her report.
It just makes it muddier, but okay, I'll, I'll back down.
I see, I see a lot of things here that are linked. Uh, you know, I can see volunteers going out there and knocking themselves out and fixing the place up. But before we find out what the final disposition of that facility is gonna be, I wouldn't sink a lot of money into it.
No, we're only doing, we're doing walls, we did, the only thing we really did is cleaning, and we're gonna do painting. We did the painting pretty much is done, Brett.
Yeah, well, those two rooms right now are done.
Little in the other room.
The revitalization isn't sinking tons of money, it's, it's just keeping the business going.
Okay, well, that was my concern, is that I didn't, I did, I, I was just concerned that we're, you know, I throw a bunch of money in, and then, oh, now that you build it, now let's figure out what we're gonna do with it. It's more of, let's figure out what we're gonna do with it, and then build towards that goal. And part of that comes from the financing, part of it comes from just the overall objective on what the facility can, can accomplish, and what, what the goals are, and what our work is for it.
Yeah, and I, I, I wanna go back to, because we're, we're floating them a lot of money each month, I feel like financially, that reporting for that finance part needs to come back to us, and not their, not their board.
Right.
Oh, they all, it all will.
But it all will, because what gets paid from tuitions, and whenever it comes short of the tuitions, will be your guys' responsibility for voting to approve the extra monies to pay for above and beyonds.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so all the revitalization stuff is just, we're lucky actually that we started it before the, before the licensing lady in the county came out. Because if we hadn't been doing anything, we would've been shut down that day. She at least saw progress, and she said, okay, you're doing progress. Yeah, go ahead.
Remember when we had the meeting to vote to approve funding the children's center, it wasn't for revitalization?
Right, that was just to keep it work.
Correct, it was just to keep the business going and all of that. So revitalization is on the backs of volunteers and whoever can, blah, blah, blah. Unless we decide to fund a portion of that project.
So we're not funding the revitalization?
We're just coming in donations right now.
We may, but we don't know what that is yet, so.
Yeah, before we, yeah, we can't spend money on that till we vote on it.
And there is some funding, because the paint was six, seven hundred dollars, I think, for materials, so you guys are funding some of the revitalization.
So, yeah.
Okay, so what I'd like to see then, from Lindy, when she comes in, is I wanna see two separate reports.
Yeah.
Okay. And one is the normal children's center stuff, and the other is the revitalization.
And I'm, yeah, the feasibility. I think that maybe we're gonna have that as a separate meeting one day, cuz we could probably go over that for hours, so.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I don't know how you have like a working meeting.
We, we do, we just make it a one top, yeah, one topic meeting, and everybody that's interested comes, and then the whole committee doesn't come to that.
Right.
Unless they're interested.
I think we need.
Do you guys have a policy committee date proposed? Linda and Shay.
I think that you proposed a date that you are available.
Yeah, you said something like the seventh or the eighth or something like that.
Yeah.
Proposed it on an email a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, so it's whatever date you're available, cuz we're available.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that, and it's gonna be, there's enough board members that wanna come to the meeting for policies, so it'll be a special meeting, so it'll be open to me. All our regular stuff, just like tonight.
Cuz the seventh was, is a Wednesday night, correct? Cuz I think you proposed the seventh or the eighth.
Okay.
Uh huh, so that would be Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
I just, I just have a question, is why there's such a big concern for everyone wanting to do the policy, and not have a couple people bring a policy to the board?
It just is, and so that's the answer.
And that just is?
Whoever wants to come from, any board member can go to any meeting, if it gets to be three, then it has to be considered a special meeting.
Well, I understand all that, I'm just wondering why two people don't just haggle it out with the commit, with the community, and then bring that to the board to vote on.
Because the board members have the right to go to any meeting they want to at any time.
Well, unless it's a, unless it's a committee meeting.
No, they can go to any meeting, any committee meeting at any time, and then it becomes a special meeting.
Well, you have to, you have to agendize it as a special meeting ahead of time, you can't just come to a committee meeting.
It has to be done ahead of time.
Because you want to.
If the third member is interested in coming, in order not to.
Well, I understand, I know, I understand that process.
So we have to call a special meeting.
I understand that, I'm just wondering why they're, they're doing, why you guys are doing it like that, that's all.
Just because the third person's interested, and we don't wanna violate the boundary.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
I was just curious, what the, what the actual reasons why, you guys just can't take care of it and bring it to the.
No reason other than that, I would think. Um, my other question was, though, uh, if we're having a special meeting regarding policies, should we, uh, hold the community? There was some, some, uh, concern, I know, during last year, that we needed other policies. Should we just ask for the community for a list of requested policies, so that we can get them all down?
And everybody should be going through our book and deciding what doesn't fit anymore, or what are, what are we doing on a normal basis that should be a policy that never got written down?
So maybe we request, before we set the special meeting agenda, a request for policies.
And everybody should send anything they have in, so if, everybody can think about it before the meeting gets going to it.
So I think that's kind of what the, you know, if it was just a meeting that wasn't a special meeting, then I, it would probably be more of a discussion with the community members than try, having to follow, follow a special meeting.
All meetings are run, all committee meetings are really run the same way. So it's the same thing.
But now, it's not gonna be a committee meeting, it's going to be a special.
They all are, committee meetings are supposed to be run the same way that all the meetings are run.
The only thing that's different is that a committee meeting can't vote on policy during a committee meeting, it has to be brought to the whole board.
Right.
And so the whole board would vote on anything that a committee brings to, you know what I mean? So, but you run them the same.
Yeah, you run them all the same way.
So then, anything that comes out of this special meeting will have to come before the board at a regular board meeting.
Well, actually not, because at a special meeting, you can make a movement and make a vote right there, because you do have a quorum.
But I think that's a good point, but I don't want, because I'm not going. I think you gotta put it to the full board.
Well, it should be like discussion only on this.
Well, we'll be a full board when you have a special meeting, because that's what you guys are doing now.
Right, but I still think whatever, unless all five of us went to that meeting, then I think it should come to all five, for everybody to look at it and be happy with it.
Okay, that's what.
But once you form a special meeting, it is a whole board.
It is like a regular board meeting.
I understand, we're just saying that probably we won't take a final action and bring it to the full board with all the rest of the people. Cool, okay, skateboard ordinance, second reading. So we want to, we make a motion to.
Yeah, we're just following formality of law.
We wanna do first the.
We wanna be like the county who just had a new ordinance this week last week.
So, I believe that Director Peterson wants to.
Considering.
We'll give this to you later, Beth.
Okay.
Or we'll get it off the thing, Director Peterson wants to do this.
Uh, make a motion to waive by reading the title only and not the three-page document. Yeah.
And what, and what's the ordinance number?
Um, did we put an O one off the last one?
Yeah.
Ordinance number eleven dash thirteen dash O one.
And so she moved to adopt it on meeting, and what is the title?
And the title is, an ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Silverado Majeska Recreation and Park District regulating the SMRPV skate park.
Give us some discussion. Okay.
Oh, no, there isn't a second yet. Is there a second?
Not second.
Go ahead, discussion.
Um, I was, you know, I did a little research on skate parks, and I had some questions. The average cost of, um, developing a skate park is fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So my question is, is there money in the budget for this? And, and those kinds of things.
They're like in a skate park.
This is affordable, donate.
They're gonna do a little mini one.
All right, but, okay, so then, what is it gonna cost us, is there diagram, a layout plot plan, what is the square footage? And do we need restrooms, and, and what's the whole design for everything?
Just going in there.
Is there a plan for this?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me, I, I think I see two things, one is adopting the ordinance, and the other is making a plan for the.
And how's it gonna work, and when is it gonna be up, and when is it gonna be down?
And we're not doing the second here, so that can't go up until we have a plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question.
And it, and it does, the ordinance doesn't take effect until thirty days after the second approval?
Okay, so if we get to the point where we say, wow, this is, costs too much, there's too much, you know, there's, there still is some liability, even though you have the ordinance, you can still be sued, um, just so you know that.
Capri's already been here, and they said they're okay with that.
So, um, so if it, so if we get to that point, we can still vote not to put the skate park?
Right, right, it's just a vote for the ordinance, which makes sense.
Just still have the ordinance for the future.
The ordinance has to be done because the state, because there's a state law about helmets and stuff, and that's all in the ordinance. And so everybody should know, if you're out there without a helmet and pads, you're gonna be kicked out, and if you get kicked out one in a couple times, you. you're gonna be kicked out and if you get kicked out one in a couple times, you can get barred for ever, for weeks or. So that's what the ordinance is about. So the plan has got to be drawn up. But the current idea is it's gonna go in the basketball court.
Half of the basketball court. That way there would still be a half a court for the people that like to come and play and then we can have, and they're on wheels, some of them, and some of them will be bolted down into the ground but once those are taken out, that will be flushed. There won't be anything left behind, a trip hazard or anything. And it's small.
I have some questions on the basic maintenance on it. With it being, that is a multi-use area there with concerts in the park, the fair and Easter breakfast. So there's going to be an amount of putting it up, taking it down, putting it up, taking it down.
Can we address that during the, on the.
It rolls away, they turn over on the side and roll away.
But some of the things of the maintenance of it and who is going to be responsible for it to make sure it's put up properly and taken down properly and the ongoing maintenance of it, making sure that in the process of putting up and taking it down, bolts are not lost, parts aren't lost or worn or, you know.
I think that was my question, it's on the second.
And that's what the plan will address. We can't plan it here right now. We're just talking about the ordinance.
So the ordinance, the ordinance, so I understand, the ordinance is saying we approve, do this? Is that what you're saying?
We're adopting an ordinance, the title which is, An Ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Silverado Majeska Recreation and Park District, Regulating this SMRPD Skate Park. And these are the legal rules that say what the people have to do, the signs, these are state, this is all state mandated.
Okay.
And this just says, you know, it took two readings and now we have to wait still thirty days before we can even set it up. And in the meantime, we need to come up with the plan and when we have the plan, then we can set it up. So it won't go up in thirty days unless we get a.
But the ordinance, and I'm guessing we're gonna have a vote on this or did we vote on this?
We're gonna vote when we are done talking right now.
But the ordinance basically is saying we are gonna comply with those regulations? Is that what the ordinance is?
If we had a skate park, if we had a skate park. We don't have one yet.
Okay, okay.
And the people coming have to comply with these regulations which are state mandated and Capri likes them and it makes.
Okay, I just, I just want to understand what.
It's a little bit the horse before the cart, but we're thinking we're gonna put it, probably put it up. So we're trying to get the thirty days passed.
Because it takes ninety days to get this going.
Okay, all right, all right. So we had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion.
And so there'll have to be a, there'll have to be a skate park subcommittee forum that's gonna maintain it because if it doesn't, then we'd have to take it away.
Take it back up in my house.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we recorded as Tom, Linda, Greg, Shay and Ron said yes. Okay, perfect. Any committee reports? Any ad hoc committee reports?
Okay. I talked to Dan Foo last week and I have a meeting set up with him after the first of the year and talked about new stuff with the open space, with Measure M. Because I, I'll check him out, he said, I said, I heard that you guys were gonna use the rest of the money for other stuff and he says, no. He said, but let's come in and, they want you to come in and talk, so.
Tell me what my Dan and money.
Yeah, I actually told him about the other property and fact that we'll probably have a management plan and he was happy that, with that. He thought that made us, put us more in the running for Measure M properties.
One of the things we learned from the, this other property we're getting, one of the conservation guys said, well, if you guys wanted, you could put a management plan together. And we're like, well, what's that and what does it cost? And it's a plan for how you run stuff and it, he said it might cost about.
About twenty thousand.
About twenty thousand. So at some point, we're gonna have to think about what's the, what's the benefit of doing that because.
Do we have an offset on income on that or offset on grants or any?
We'd probably be using our savings to do that as a, as a future because we're open space and it'll be our first open space in fifty years.
But we'll put us in the running to acquire other properties and management plans to go along with it. Well, the fact that we're giving you more real estate and additional property to manage, is there any way to go to the county and say, we've got more real estate, we need more money? I'm just guessing.
Doubt it. Don't doubt it, yeah. They, I mean, that's part of the thing we have to think of is if we take more real estate, like the one we're getting here has really like trust, who owns it at TPL?
Sorry?
Who owns it?
TPL.
So TPL hasn't spent a cent on it in like the five or ten years that they've had it. So our costs are gonna be minimal except if we want to put in benches or water or shade or something.
It all depends on how you manage it. We were talking about that earlier.
So we can manage it pretty inexpensively, but if we show, we show the Measure M people and we show the biologists that we're not gonna go in and pay a little paradise, then they're gonna say, well, we have these other little orphaned properties, maybe you want them and some of them actually have management money that go with them.
Well, that was my concern. If we're picking up additional areas to maintain or to whatever, you know, we need to.
Can we afford it?
Well, somewhere to get money for it.
Right, well, or it means what we're already spending money on, we have to reallocate funds. So we get the electric bill to go down by hundreds of dollars a month.
Or we'll have to raise men.
Yeah, do fundraisers.
Maybe that's something that Christmas and the candidate supports.
And depending on the conservation of each piece of property, like you were saying, that some conservation easements, you don't have to put any money into it. You basically leave them the way they are and that way it's more of a wildlife area. So like Ron was saying, you get that piece of property under your belt and then there's gonna be, other properties are gonna be purchased by Measure M two monies as well which might have different conservation easements on them. And by those different conservation easements, the next one might come with a conservation easement with trail access and recreation on it. So then there might be monies along with that one because now you have trail maintenance, you know, kiosses and benches.
Well, that was my concern.
So each piece of property is specific, they're not all the same.
More money to do it.
Well, there's nothing, there's no expenses related to it or?
Not this particular. Yeah, we're working on how to make it as inexpensive as possible.
So we lucked out in the first piece of property that we're acquiring is that it doesn't take any advantage. I mean, there's a couple other that we're looking at that will and I happen to know that there's some grants associated for environment, you know, reclamation and there's money going with it. But all that requires a lot more study and plans and all that.
Hiring a biologist and all kinds of stuff.
And this one's easy, they just give it to us and we put some signs up and Steve told everyone every once in a while.
You don't even have to because it's landlocked.
It's behind Dan's gates and we're having.
There's no access.
Kind of planning with Dan that he'll be the gatekeeper and you don't get to go back unless he's there. It's not fire, you know, it's fire safe.
So there's no, there's a clearing or anything?
And again, before, you know, we're not gonna make a decision to do it. You know, when we talk to them, we're gonna put a proposal together to bring the board, the public and say, okay, what do you think? I, yeah, I want to throw something out this. We had talked about this a long while back and the other organization, one of the other organizations that can, is the Fire Safety Council. And we talked about partnering with them and we really haven't done it in a way. We all kind of agreed that'd be a good idea. But I think this would be a good combination effort if we do get something that's off the boons or, you know, that, that the Fire Safety Council somehow gets involved to say, well, we're gonna, you know, watch the brush and lend some expertise or something to making that a little more fire safe. Just an idea.
That's what goes, that's what goes in the management plan.
Yeah, okay, but I'm just, I'm saying the combination, I think it makes us stronger if we combine with another organization that's concerned about, because the biggest, you know, concern out here is fire safety.
Like Canyon Night Conservation is a good one to partner up with because they're for saving the canyons.
That this board needs to do is with environmental organizations when it comes to open space.
That's gonna be your biggest and strongest link.
You know, isn't the Fire Safe Council, it's more of an education. I mean, that's what all of the Fire Safe Councils and.
I'm looking at his ideas, this is an idea, we need to think about doing that with whoever, so we're not picking anybody. Are we gonna have an open space and trails committee?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'll call a meeting after the first of the year.
Yeah. So, Joel would talk about it, but some of the, like, well, Ron keeps asking the Wildlands Conservancy, that's the other group up here, right? We can have the collar property. And we're just like, you know, we just keep asking and we figure, you know, after we wear them down enough, maybe they'll say yes. Then that gives us two rentals and we can put the biologists there and that pays for a biology report, so.
They offered to, to Dan Foo and company that if they bought it for Measure M, they'd give us that four acres, but.
They didn't, they didn't, they didn't have enough, yeah.
So, but I keep asking.
Yeah, good, well, thank you.
Just wear them down.
But you guys keep building your alliances with other people in areas that have interest and create a collaboration of different people.
Yeah, it's been remarkable because Ron's.
It'll make it a lot stronger.
Ron's met all these people and now they're at least talking to us about giving us property where they, you know, when we first met them, they wouldn't, they were like, who are you? How would you do that?
Well, they've been talking about for years, but we've never had a piece of property to, under our belt. So once you get that first piece of property, that's gonna give you, you know, some legitimacy.
That's the key.
And it was the same way before when we first became an open space district. That was the same issue. Like the ones in, over in Tribuco, they were, we really want you guys to have it, but you guys are such a small district, you don't have any, you know, track record, so.
We do have some open space, this place and.
Well, we have a couple acres.
No, we got a few acres on the top of the hill behind, behind the.
We actually need to point that out.
It's open.
But they see our, but they see the realistic part of the two is our budget's only twenty-eight thousand from our taxes.
About ninety-eight.
Well, no, ninety-eight's all these other things, the in-lu fees, but really, once that were to go away, we only have like thirty thousand coming in from our tax base, so.
I'm gonna try to get a meeting with Spitzer and ask him if we can annex Tribuco or make Tribuco join us so all the canyons would be one big group, which I think might, from protection, might be a good thing. I don't know if the cost of money.
If you get that Measure Two property, that would be a perfect link into that. I've always been wanting to do that for, you know, a long time.
Well, I want the Saddle Creek North property. Because it's, it's an orphan out there, just nobody, and there's a great trail from that all the way to the main divide. And a fire trail, so it's not a new trail, you can't.
To the main divide or to Santiago?
Santiago.
Okay.
I think of that as the main divide.
I was getting my, I was getting my topo mixed up there.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
It's the Santiago, yeah.
Any other director comments?
Oh, can we do a recreation report with Joel? Do you have anything to report from your hikes for SMRPD?
Well, this time of year is always harder because people are, yeah. The weather's been very unpredictable, it's rained, been rained out on some weekends, but we've had some good attendance on, some of them. I, it's usually, this time of year I usually get about a handful, like maybe from five to eight people and that's been standard. But then I've had some tourists not sponsored by SMRPD where nobody showed up, so. But considering I could, considering we could do what we can do and get people out on the trails and offer these programs with almost no budget and everything and we're competing against Irvine Ranch with all these staff members and they have been advertising press and everything, it's pretty, I think it's pretty impressive that, that not just me, but our team of volunteers are accomplishing what we're accomplishing. We're getting new people all the time. I have the shelter and fire making program that we just did, which we didn't start any fires.
I was concerned.
Yeah, I know. I know you guys were concerned about that, but all the, all the people on that. Or no, a good portion of the people that are on that tour had never been to Silverado Canyon before and they're all from Orange County. So, and that's consistent and that's what we've always wanted. And, and they're just wide-eyed as ever and wanna go back and bring their family and, you know, all our tours are very stewardship oriented, so, you know, these people are gonna be advocates for taking care of what we have here. You know, very sensitive to everything, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's about it. It's, it's, it's just hard in the fall and winter to get people out. So any, any efforts on anybody's part to spread the word about what we're offering, because all of our programs are unique and it's not too many people offering this or too many groups offering what we're offering exactly, so. I, I haven't gotten any negative feedback yet as far as I know, so.
Is there a new recreation schedule? Because I was looking on the website and I saw the last one went up, I think it was February of two thousand and thirteen. So is there a new one? Where does it come out annually?
We just, we need to get this stuff to Steve so he can update it on the calendar.
You talking like a print one, like it's mailed out?
It was, it's printed and it's on the, it's on the website, actually, they're just the PDF. So I was looking for things for my boys to do.
Oh, you mean like the brochure, the recreation brochure?
That's super helpful.
And do we have things planned for the?
We usually do it, yeah.
We need to have a committee meeting.
I've gotten a lot of feedback from canyon residents saying that's like, they rely on that more than going on the internet or any other form they put on their refrigerator.
Right, right, yeah.
And go, oh, I'm looking for it and they put it on their calendar. And I've gotten more canyon residents through that brochure than any other way as far as I can tell. So it is helpful to have that if we can pull it up again.
Because I was just looking for things for my kids to do during the break.
Yeah, well, they're home from school.
Yeah.
I mean, we're all over the internet, but, you know, if you don't have that opportunity or you don't like staring at a computer all day long, it's, that's a good.
It's really difficult to get that thing out.
It's all in one place, you know, it was good, it was great.
If you wanna get together to have a recreation meeting sometime in January, that's gonna be available for that and then we can figure out who's gonna help us with what. Kevin. Cool. I have one question. What would you say is your most popular activity that people are really interested in?
Night walks are, well, usually night walks are the biggest deal.
Like owling?
Or owling or that sort of thing. But as the weather changes, this time of year, it's even hard to get people on that. So now it's more just theme, really unique themes. Foraging is still really popular, so our Holy Jim hike coming up, that's foraging. Is, there's people waitlisted on that one. So everybody's jumping at the bit. I guess that was like during their holiday break, that's where they wanna go and so that's coming up. This Sunday, Sunday, so. Foraging, night hikes, I don't think there's anything else. Everybody loves waterfalls, but it's so dry this year. I mean, all our local waterfalls were dry. I just did Harding Canyon, what's today, Monday? Yesterday. It's all clear. And that went real well and I had a good attendance there. That was an SMRPD one and we had, I think it was like eight, eight people and.
And you're not cutting poison off?
I might be.
He eats it for lunch.
Yeah, and that waterfall is, is one of the few that actually flows even when there's not that much rain yet, so. Black Star is still pretty bone dry, but everybody wants to go on Black Star and I don't know. You know, it's fun to go to it dry, but I think if we can offer it wet, if it rains enough, it'll probably be February or March. And, you know, Black Star just gets more and more press all the time. O C Weekly did an article on it. O C Register's done multiple articles on it, so.
If we acquired this acreage in Baker, it'd be cool to have, there's a meetup group in Majeska that goes hikes to the, where the goat shed used to be, now there's just a bench. And they're a really friendly group and they hike up and they all carry food and wine, beer, whatever and they go up and then they hang out and they socialize and they eat and drink, it's for dinner and they hike back down and get them out hiking and something we could sponsor on that property.
Now, we used to do that, years ago we had that before the fire and all the disasters. We had that once a year or two.
Totally different.
No, we're partners, Mark, that's, Mark's a part of that. Yeah, we, we'll actually supply naturalists sometimes on that one.
That's a good idea.
If some people wanna know the stuff and others just wanna eat a feast and gab about whatever, which is great, so.
Have some folk music going and some dancing.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I read the motion, we adjourn.
I got Christmas cookies.
Second?